Good morning and welcome to the information meeting of May the 5th. We'll start it off with the ask Commissioner Shores if he did the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, most everybody in here has been in here before or many other times, but there's flags back there and there's flags up here and that's so that we can face you and you can face us and we're not turning our backs to each other. So if you'll bow your heads. Most heavenly gracious God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time together and Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come and represent the citizens of Davidson County. And Lord, we ask God that everything that we do up here, Father, would be representative of you and your will. And Lord, we ask for discernment. We ask for your guidance and all of the decisions that we make. Father, we pray, Lord, that you would just watch over each and every one, return them home safely to their families. We ask that you would watch over the leadership of this nation, the leadership of the state, and the leadership of this county. Father, we ask that you would go with our military services and our, all of our workers and folks that are out here on the line doing the job. We pray, God, that you would take care of them, watch over them, and return them home safely to their families. These things we ask in your holy name we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Good prayer, brother. Thank you. Okay, I was just getting ready to say.
A few minutes late, sorry about that.
Okay. Commissioner McClure, if you'd mind recognizing any veterans we have here?
Yeah, we have started a tradition of recognizing all the veterans and then giving them one of our lapel pins that has veteran on it. Are there any veterans in here that have not received a pin? Are there any veterans in here, period?
Amen.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. If you, please register if you are interested in speaking at public address if you haven't already done so. Senator Jarvis has requested that we add proposal for development of Greenway through the agenda as Agenda Item 7F. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Most approve the amended agenda.
Okay, do I have a second? Let's vote.
All votes are in. That motion carries by 1070.
Okay. Uh, forgive me if I don't pronounce your last name. You may have to say it. David Mar.
Martinak?
Martinak, okay. Uh, David, if you want to.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is my first time here. It's nice to see you all. I'll keep it short. Um, I've been a paramedic here in Davidson since beginning of 2012. Um, I came here from Canada when I was about 10 years old. Grew up in Reed's and this has been my home. Um, it's been an honor. It's an honor to be here and it's been an honor to serve as a paramedic in this county. I've gotten to know just about everybody and I feel a lot of your faces are very familiar. Don't know where I've seen you, but it's great to be here. I just wanted to come up and make a quick statement, um, about funding for EMS. Of course, I guess everybody comes to you all saying, "Give us the money, give us the money, give us the money." Um, what I'm really concerned with now is that we're, we're bleeding a lot of our talent, um, a lot of our experienced people, EMTs and medics, and it's really concerning to me actually. You know, I want, this, this county actually has a great reputation around the state for being one of the most aggressive, proactive, competent EMS agencies, but we've been losing a lot of people lately to the private sector, to Atrium and Novant because they're hiring paramedics now and they're very competitive with their pay. Um, there's other counties like Wake County, Johnson County, I don't know if New Hanover, but they're raising paramedic pay as well. Of course, you probably have people come up here talking about how stressful the job is. You all, you all know what it's about. Um, I do it because I love it. Um, one of the things I'd kind of like to remove from, you know, what I hear a lot is, "Well, you just got to live below your means." You know, you're living above your means right now. And I, I kind of find that insulting, like, you know, you don't know my budget, that's, so I just, I don't listen to that. You know, Elon Musk didn't get rich by canceling Netflix and brewing his coffee at home. Um, um, so, you know, we can blame this on the federal government inflation, all that kind of stuff. You know, it's harder for everybody right now, um, but no matter, I don't think it's one person's fault, but I think Davidson County, we need to stay competitive so that we have quality people because you get what you pay for. And if we're not competitive, we're going to be scraping the bottom of the barrel in terms of talent and I don't want to see that happen. Now, a big change I made recently, I've got four kids now and I love serving this county. Um, to supplement my income, I started my own business in December. I caught the eye of a CEO of a consulting firm down in Miami and I've been in talks with him for the last two weeks and he hired me as a business executive Tuesday night. Uh, in light of that, I have to take that opportunity and I submitted my two weeks notice, uh, yesterday and, um...
Three minutes, sir.
Okay. Um, let me just wrap it up. Um, so instead of living below my means, I'm just going to make more money and, uh, that will solve that problem. Um, I hope we can stay competitive. I'll be working remotely and I hope I can stay here part-time. I've been talking to Larry and it's looking good and I just want to thank you all for your time and, uh, I really want to see my home do well.
So I wish you, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir. Thank you and thanks, thank you for all you did.
Thank you. We appreciate your service to the county.
Okay, Mitch Garmer, is that correct?
Right. From Chairman.
Good morning.
Council members, uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm used to the city, the city setting. My name is Mitch Garmer. I'm just a citizen here in, uh, Davidson County. I currently live in Churchland off of Jubilee Road. I've been a citizen in Davidson County my whole life. Uh, served in Army for six years. Um, I've been a city employee of Winston-Salem for five years. I recently left. Also, I was a member of the rescue squad for a couple of years in Churchland Fire Department. So I'm, uh, got a lot of, uh, invested in this county and, um, a couple of things I want to speak with. That statement that David just made really hit me hard. I didn't expect that this morning and he, uh, hit the nail straight on the head about county employees, uh, leaving and, uh, now that the county is going to be scraping the, uh, the bottom of the barrel for talent. I can personally attest that, uh, Mr. David here has saved countless lives in this county and by losing him is a great loss to this county. What I'm afraid of is, uh, more things like this happening in the coming. Uh, we, uh, have extended response times with Sheriff's Department getting places. We have, uh, you know, ambulances out of service and nobody's talking about it. I'm given, uh, the commissioners here a chance to, to get this fixed because I care about this county so much that I'm willing to stand up here and, and, and get it, and help get it fixed. Um, hopefully this doesn't go to the public because, um, you know, the, the public is going to demand that this gets fixed. Um, I've always been told that if you have, uh, an issue and you bring it up, come, uh, come prepared with, uh, something to fix it, you know, some kind of, uh, plan to fix it. And a couple of things I would suggest is not just sign-on bonuses, but retention bonuses for these county employees, these first responders, because what happens is you get pay compression when you, uh, increase the starting salary for people and then the, uh, the tenured employees, uh, feel left out and then they end up leaving anyways. Um, and, uh, you know, another thing about the, uh, the, uh, ambulance response times and the sheriff's response times, I've, I've personally been in a position before where we waited for 25 minutes for a sheriff's deputy response on the other side of the county for, let's say, an overdose. Uh, first responders are not allowed to go into that scene until the scene is secure. Uh, I don't know if y'all have had any experience with overdoses or any kind of thing like that, but 25 minutes is life and death. When seconds matter, 25 minutes is a lifetime. People are literally dying waiting on the sheriff's department to get there and it's not the sheriff's department's fault. People don't want to apply, but we're not competitive with other counties. Uh, David hit it right on the head when there's other counties out there that's, um, increasing starting salaries and retention bonuses and stuff like that. I would like to see more of that. Um, that's all I've got to say as far as, uh, the sheriffs and the EMS. I also, uh, my heart's really big with the rescue squads in Davidson and Thomasville. I'd like to speak on their behalf real quick. Um, these men and women are complete volunteers. They don't get paid a dime. Um, every year, they have to come up y'all...
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes? Plenty of time. Uh, every year they have to come to y'all and ask for money and, uh, the fire departments around here, they get tax money. Everybody knows that. I don't think the rescue squad is trying to take any money away from the fire departments. I just think they want to be supplemented a little bit and give the opportunity to serve the citizens. Um, hopefully I can see a change, you know, real soon with this. Um, I'll be here more active at these commissioner meetings, uh, because I think it's our job as citizens to hold the commissioners accountable and, uh, to make sure that everybody, you know, does what is in the best interest for Davidson County. Uh, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you, commissioners, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Okay. I have to consider for deliberation Davidson County Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report. Ms. Coontz will lead this off. Ms. Coontz is Director of the Health Department, just for those who don't know who she is.
Thank you, Chairman Shell. Good morning, commissioners. It's great to see everyone. Commissioner Trow, I apologize, this will be a repeat from what you heard from the Board of Health this week, um, but annually I bring to y'all our Child Fatality Prevention Team Report. The purpose of this team is to examine any child that dies in Davidson County, 17 years of age or younger, that was not involved in the last year with the DSS Department. So while there may be more children that die that we don't review, if they've been involved with the DSS Department, they review that a different way. This year when we looked at the deaths, um, we found no really trends that we could work towards. There were no co-sleeping deaths that we had seen in the past, so that was a really good thing. We feel like that's an improvement. Um, you may remember we did a ONCE campaign that we were handing out ONCEs to new mothers to remind them of safe sleep habits. This year also, there were not any, um, significant issues with car crashes that we had seen in the past, um, reviews. So when we finished up for the year, we had no recommendations to make. Um, still, we're working on things, trying to partner more with the schools about, um, you know, self-awareness to, uh, improve, um, the attempts for suicide and things like that, but with all that we had this year, there were no recommendations. So I was bringing that to y'all to let you know where we are for this year.
Do we have any questions, Ms. Coontz? Lady Bate? Thank you, lady.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Mental Health Assessment Services, Mr. Smith, will you lead us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Duane Childers to come forward, please. We've gone through this extensive process of, uh, getting out bids, service bids for our three areas of jail, uh, DSS assessments and, um, and assessments for the school. I think Duane's ready to present that. We had, first time we bid them out, uh, we didn't kind of get apples to apples in terms of price, so we called all the groups in to level the playing field to get down. We ended up with one bidder and again, I won't ruin Duane's thunder here, but that's where we are.
Go ahead, sir. You're doing a fine job.
Um, so that's what we're bringing forward today. We're ready to bid these. I've shared these with Sand Hills, um, and you'll see the price tag in a minute. They, um, at this moment have agreed to what we've got here for you, so I think there'll be no county money involved and we can soon get started after July 1st. Um, I have to change the budget to get these funds included should it get approved and move forward, but Duane, have at it.
Uh, I believe that this is a Medicaid reinvestment opportunity from Sand Hills. Yes. I'm not sure. I believe that would be a grant, uh, coming through them to us. The project was bid twice, the first time, actually three times. The first time, we didn't have enough folks to respond. The second time, uh, we were more transactional in our request of the RFP and then third, the third time was making it more FTEs. And, excuse me, what we got here is all three school systems will be served, the DSS, the jail, uh, one FTE, full-time equivalent to DSS, one to the Davidson County Board of Education, one for the jail, and this would be post-release, uh, not while they're incarcerated, and then one for the city of Lexington and Thomasville Boards of Education. So this would be four FTEs. As we believe their, their duties would be more of a case manager acquiring the clinical assessment, which is the key that opens all the other, uh, treatments and other assessments that they would need, uh, to become better. The other item is they would complete the intake packet for those treatments and this would include intensive in-home facility placement or even day treatment. One of the items that, uh, I know that Casey and I had went back and forth and I believe Trish did too, was having some way to, yes, we went through the bidding process, yes, we're making the recommendation for a ward, uh, yes, we're going to have a contract and I'll be working on that shortly. The, the item was what performance measure would hold their feet to the fire? Um, not that they're just reporting numbers, which would be, um, tasks and duties, but, but circling back, what would be a performance measure? So we have basically two options and Casey, you and I need to get, get back together on this as we'll put it in the contract. Um, request a contractor will offer an assessment with disposition, disposition through all accepted mediums, in-person appointment, drive-in, walk-in, telehealth within one business day of request for service or same outcome but more technical. For non-jail requests, a contractor will offer an assessment with disposition through all accepted mediums, which I just mentioned, within two hours of normal business operations. That would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, excluding holidays and with, and within 24 hours of non-business operations. All assessments for requests will be done within one business day of request of service. The caveat though, that we've got to write around, is that if the person is identified as needing that clinical assessment and they're unwilling to take that next appointment, which would be the day or within two hours or the next day, you know, how would we go about basically holding the contractor harmless? You can't make that person... You can't make that person take that clinical assessment. So that's something that we'll need to work on.
Was that with regards to the post-release?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's also, it's also as you start. What we realized when we bid this out, the, the costs got exorbitantly high when we all wanted clinical people. So we talked, you know, it ended up falling out, which you're going to hear in a minute, is Daymark ended up being the, the last responsible responsive bidder. But then we realized, okay, if we take caseworkers because of cost, because we know we've got a number we've got to live within, how do we ensure that these assessments get done timely? And so this language was brought up to Daymark in terms of, you know, again, holding feet to the fire. We want them done as rapidly as possible.
One measure would be on post. It could be through adjudication if it, if, and that's half of what Daymark's getting now. It's a lot of it's coming through court order, through probation.
Right.
And all that. So there is one measure sticking there that could encourage a person to comply.
Right.
And that would be through.
And I'm talking more too for the kid's side, not just the jail piece. You know, the jail piece was got a little bit, you got a third party dancing with you, the court system. But Duane is, and we talked about this at a high level. Assessments is one thing. In other words, we want them done as quickly as possible. But then on the backside of all three programs, what is our goal? And it became real clear, real easy. We were trying to keep it very simple. We don't know, we want to cut the recidivism rate now. We're not looking for quantity. We're not trying to bring you guys' numbers and saying, we run 500 people through these programs and we're not sure what happened thereafter. I'd rather have 10 people that I could parade, well, not parade in here individually, but be able to show you, I kept them out of the jail. Or I had a child that was truant, doing some, having some issues in school. And we're, and I was able to, not necessarily turn them around, but because we know the recidivism rate's going to be high. But could, if we're making a difference, that's what we're looking for. Especially for the amount of money we're talking about, so.
He's showing us what the results are.
Right. We want, we want to really be able to say, hey, we've got tangible proof that child X is not truant anymore, is showing up to school. There's an impact on their grades. It just trickles down like dominoes. And I think if we can even get a handful of those, it's a successful program. Because it's going to be, this is a tall order, very tall, tough services.
One problem that you're going to have is being compromised due to the HIPAA laws. When you go to any, any type of treatment, I'm talking about when you're trying to look at what affects that. This has had on those that you administer to is, is the HIPAA laws. And that's, that's, that's a huge obstacle.
I don't think you got to bring the personal information in to give us the results.
Yeah, the updates on the recidivism part. But I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, again, y'all remember this. I mean, this is a fluid program, something we've really never done before. We may end up having to bring back, y'all make changes on the fly, move it around, et cetera. I'm just proud of Sand Hills for, you know, again, the cost tag got up to $385,000. Kind of started with a little bit less number than that. And they reviewed the, the stuff and said, we're willing to help. And so I think Victoria Witt will be here at the next meeting and perhaps give an update from Sand Hills. So if we want to thank her then, we can. But.
One of the counties is, on certain inmates, they, they can do this. They offer them an early timeout if they complete the program. So instead of being, say, they, two weeks or three weeks or whatever it is that, that they don't have to spend if they complete this program. I'll have to work that out with the sheriff, but I know that one county is doing that. And they've had some success.
And that's kind of, we talked about this in depth, the difference between pre-trial release and post. You know, what I brought you on the PowerPoint, I guess, was in, I'm not sure when we had it on the meeting, but we focused on post because technically, there is a pre-trial program. That's what the, that's what the whole bail process is for. What we just, what we thought about it, and we talked to Durham County, who runs a similar program. You're right. Probation and parole operates a similar. We thought, well, we're overlapping services. Well, we can get referrals from them for time, you know, less things and get them out. And also time served. I'm not sure that anybody has a program for those folks that walk out after their time is. There's recidivism rates there too, that are, have to be as high as anybody else. You know, in other words, they reoffend, they're right back in the system. So we feel like we got a clientele that we're not duplicating something somebody else is already doing.
And I don't think we need, I think that, that, that target needs to be focused on. You know, I'm a big supporter of, I don't want to wait and spend, and spend money on people when they get to be adults and are full-blown addicts. When we got children out here that need care, that need to be taken out of dangerous situations. You know, we've never really addressed the fact that the reason you have increase in mental illness, one of the reasons you have increases in mental illness is the fact you've got babies born addicts.
Amen.
And nobody wants to do anything about that because it's too difficult. What I think that's what our job is, is to look at the difficulty and try to find some kind of remedy. And foster care, proper foster care programs is very important. We got to get these kids out of these environments, you know. And I, you know, I spent some of my time in foster care, so I know what, what I'm talking about here. And if we can give these kids a vision for the future, a positive vision for the future, maybe in the future, we, we, we won't have to be dealing with them when they're in jail. Maybe the substance abuse will be cut down. The mental illness will not be as, as extreme. And it's, it's a huge challenge. It really is. It's a huge challenge. But I think we can do it if we put our mind to it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, if, I heard you say something about accountability earlier. So Sand Hills is going to oversee Daymark and, and ensure that.
No, they're simply the funders.
Okay. Who, so how would we make sure that we're holding?
We're doing the contractual relationship.
Okay. I just, I have personal knowledge of some, that they let a lot of things go through the cracks. My son was, went to Daymark, was there seven days. Not one person did any kind of inpatient or outpatient stuff with him. He left there seven days later and, and didn't even have an appointment to, to come back. We had to send him out of state to, to get him help. So I just want to make sure that.
Amen.
That they're held accountable and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
We spend a lot of time on the performance side of this, the outcome piece. What do we want to have happen? And so we beef that part up of these, these bids, if you will.
What is the clawback against the contractor if he don't perform or if they don't perform? I mean, I know the ultimate is you.
Yeah, termination.
Termination, but I'm saying, what's the deadlines? I mean, how much time are you going to give them? You know, they're probably not going to make every assessment on time, so like they're supposed to. What is the clawback? What is the penalty?
Do we have anything in there for they don't meet the assessments?
We, we don't currently. No, sir.
I mean, it would be a thread of termination of the contract, you know.
Duane, that was something you were, we were looking at as the contract is actually drafted. That would be included into the final.
Yes, sir.
Adoption of the contract.
Yes, sir.
You know, you can tell them what you want to do all day long, but if they don't perform, what's the penalty for it other than termination? We're not looking for termination. We're just looking for somebody to do the job.
Do the work, yes, sir.
Do the work and do it correctly and in a timely manner, so.
I think one of the things that come to my mind as I was working on this was how they may be, the kids may be having trouble in school. They may be a product of their parents, okay? So if they're, if mom or dad is in the county jail, you know, how, how do you get those folks back on track? How do you get the parents back on track? And I think this is one of those things that it, it may not cure all the ills that we have, but I think as Casey pointed out, it is a very good start.
Good deal.
It's a very good start. I, I was really impressed with, Billy West come and spoke to us too, and, and how, how committed he was, to your point, sir, to helping us out with this. And I believe those, these full-time people would have the time to do that versus it being more of a transactional process and then reimbursement. Because they get to know the, the clients that they're working with. I'm sorry, that.
Who would get these assessment reports? You, Casey?
Um.
I mean, there's got to be somebody they end up laying on their desk.
Yeah, the assessments would be with Trish. You know, we'll have to work through how the other two work. Because I think we were going to manage the school one out of Trish's office again. Jail one, I'm not sure. They may have to come out of our office, you know, the manager's office, I'm not sure. I might be schooled on what I'm looking at. In terms of what I'm looking at and being able to, because, I mean, I'm a novice at that, so. I'm not sure.
Somebody's got to take this information. And then again, how long are you going to give them to give you this information? Is it quarterly? Is it monthly?
We've got, we've got measures in there for the report part of it, yeah.
Monthly?
Yes, sir. It is. I just hadn't gotten there yet, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
I hate to sound like McDonald's here, McDonald here, but numbers being served, numbers cases closed, length of time to complete the assessment outcome of the assessment, child placement for treatment, number of assists with treatment location. That would be that packet I was talking about earlier. Number of placement, location, sorry. Length of time to assist with, assist with placements, length of time to locate placement, treatment options, program recidivism rate, which is what the manager spoke about, tracking of school attendance, of grade performance, tracking of school behavioral issues. And this would all come through the school system. As case managers, they would be required to keep track of reports monthly. Number of offenses post-treatment, this would be more for jail-centric. Job placement and length of employment, number of workforce development referrals, number of other outside agency referrals, number of mental health assessments. I realize, and I do apologize, this was trying to be in a nutshell. It's a pretty, pretty good sized nutshell. It is complex and I believe we have the group professionals, a great vendor in Daymark Recovery Services that are able to make this work. And I know you guys have shot some questions at us already and we'll be glad to entertain more of those because I'm done, sir.
One of the, one of the measures that you probably will need to include in that is the number of people that walk, because you can't force them to do this. And if they walk off the program, it shouldn't be held against the program itself.
I would agree with that.
So if you have an accountability of the ones that just walk off and refuse to complete the, the program, then that would give you a good idea, a better idea, I think.
I believe you're right. I believe it's like anything else. They're going to have to want to make that change, whether it's a child, a mom, a dad, an adult, or whatever. They're going to have to want this themselves. And we're just here to help them, you know, get to where they need to be.
Are they getting paid per assessment or just a monthly fee? How, how, how are?
The salary.
The monthly fee for services.
I mean, because we, there was no way to compare apples to apples per assessment. Some of them shot us cost that way. And what I want, again, because I don't know how many assessments I'm going to do. So I can't bid-wise know if, is this a good bid or is this a bad bid? I wanted a bid for, you know, total cost to run eight to five as many assessments as we can do. But with, again, the, the real outcome being more of the efficiency side or the effectiveness, what's our, how many people are we stopping from coming back to the jail? Or how many children can we, can we help get to a better place? You know, I'd like to see folks just become, not go back to jail and be better citizens. Become, you know, pay their taxes, get a home, do those kinds of, or get a place to live. Get a place to live and those kinds of.
To Commissioner McClure's point, if they only do two assessments a month, then, you know, what are you really getting out of it?
Could be two people stopping, I don't know, coming back to jail, which could be a lot.
But we're not married to all of this. We can change it.
And we can.
So, yeah, I mean, we got to see if it works.
Because I just figure, I figure without even knowing much about this, recidivism rate's probably going to be pretty high, you know. So I just want to make a dent in that.
A lot of the suggestions that comes out of this opioid committee might dovetail in with some of this as well.
Right.
And beef it up and, and fill in those spots where you, where you see it's not. And we have a tremendous need in this county for some kind of, of halfway house or some kind of physical place for these people to go. Because if you just turn them out, even if you turn them out with a peer support, if they can't get a job, within 30 days, they back in the same stuff. It's, it's, there's got to be something further on.
Well, the good news now that with the labor market as it is, that's working to the advantage of the program. You know, with all the help wanted signs and everything like that. But you're right, in a downturn, it's a tough, it's tough to be turned out even with support behind you. You're exactly right. The opioid money can supplement this program too. This is a very tailored kind of approach, surgical. And we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Casey, Duane, you've done a tremendous job. I know anything you put your hands to, you do it thoroughly. I know that from experience, from you making me do things thoroughly. So I appreciate that. Anything that we can do for the mental health of our citizens, even our medical ministries, everything like that. I think we need to pay more attention to pouring into individuals like that and giving our resources. Because like you say, not only are we supporting our employees and we need to support them more with everything that's going about, but the more that inflation rises, the more that the cost of living goes up, the more that these people need these services more than ever. And we need to really do everything that we can to support them. And, you know, mental health-wise, it's touched every one of us sitting up here. It's touched everybody out in the, out in the area. So I'm dedicated to it and I know the commissioners are. And I just pray that this service is as good as it's brought forward. And I think, like Mr. Commissioner McClure said, it's something that's fluid. So if we get halfway through it, we need to change something, we can change it. So I'm all for it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Ma, 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 I personally know Trish will tell us very quickly whether this is helping her in her problems. The many, many times we've heard of them on Friday afternoon trying to find a placement for a child and how difficult it is. So we'll know quickly from her whether it's working for her department. And I'm glad for that.
Yeah, I think it's going to be great. The only thing I might add, and wherever you want to fit it in, is I think we need to have a, a clear-cut definition of what success actually means.
Amen. I agree.
I think we, I don't know, how are you going to do that? Yeah, it is. It's very difficult. You're right about that.
You know, one question I was going to ask earlier while I was listening. When you think, speak of treatment locations, since we've switched over and all, our locations, you know, we, we were having treatments for various things, even as far as Concord, I believe it was. We still have the same one. We still have the same one? Yes. So with this, we have, okay. That, that's not hooked up with Sand Hills. That's, you know, those are standalone. Well, I, I wondered if they changed since we had changed since then. I, I tell you, the, the, the problem is like, said, it's got to, you got to want it. My son went through all of this. I put him in probably four different locations. And I have with my grandson as well. If they don't want to stay, they don't stay. I can find them walking out on the, on the street. They can just walk off the premises and go wherever they want to go. So it's, it's the, the definition of success is going to be real difficult to come to.
I think.
And if someone doesn't want to work, they don't go to work.
I think, I think my definition of success is it, if it affects one family positively. If it saves one life, it's worth it. That's why, you know, it's important for our EMS folks to be out there on the road protecting. If you save one life, it's worth every penny we've ever spent on you. If we can save one person from falling in, back to addiction or saving their lives, then we've done our jobs as leaders in this community. One life is all that matters. I mean, if we lost a life and it was our fault for insurance-wise, we'd be paying more money than we got in our budget to, to run the whole county for a year. So I think of just putting a little percentage in here to save a life is well worth it, so.
Certainly a good start.
Amen.
I agree. Because, you know, we can sit back and, and continue to do things we've always done and then walk out on our front porch and evaluate are things getting better or worse? And find after getting worse, which tells you what we were doing, what isn't working. So we got to go to new avenues and try to figure, well, maybe we need to start trying to target them when they're this high instead of waiting until this high. So I think it's, we're moving. And like, I think it's Fred or one of you said, it's fluid. You know, we can make some necessary adjustments as we go. Just be prepared to do that. Don't sit back and say, oh, we're doing something. You know, just be prepared to make those changes. Thank you, Duane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Mr. Chairman, I can also thank Trish Baker and Major Craven from Sheriff's Office. They were instrumental in, with Duane and myself sitting down and looking through these things over the last several months. She could not be here this morning, but she wanted me to let y'all know.
When the opioid committee meets, we'd like to have you present that to the committee on exactly how it works and what it's, what it's doing, how you're going to do it. So we can see if there's any way we can tie in some of that opioid money to make it better.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is.
Director, to put this on the agenda for Tuesday. Put this on the consent agenda for Tuesday for approval?
Amen.
Yeah, I'm good with it. Casey, when does this start?
July one.
July one?
Yeah. Or after that, oh, was it after that? August, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Memorial Day recognition flag display, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, um, Trish Baker couldn't be here this morning for this item, but she wanted to ask the board's permission to display, um, some red, white, and blue flags with around Memorial Day and a little bit into June, uh, with deceased family members' names that's, uh, served in the military to honor their service.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve, Mr. Yehes, second, but Mr. Shores?
I didn't hear what he said.
Oh, my God.
The red, the little flag stuff for.
I know we don't usually vote, but there you go.
Amen.
The, the Boy Scouts used to put them down on all the streets. They don't do that anymore.
Everybody good? Where did you get them all?
You need to have verbally, Debbie, are you good?
I don't have the, I've got the motions in.
Okay.
I voted.
Yes.
Oh, you want to vote?
Yeah, we'll fight on that one, get that one out the way so Trish can roll.
The votes are in. And that motion carries by vote seven zero.
Okay, the PTRC designation of lead agency for county funding plan, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, every year that PTRC, they're designated to, um, as they have been here lately. We used to be the lead agency for operating the, um, the funds that go through senior services for the aging programs. We designated them to lead agency several years ago. Annually, they like to have that, that is presented by the board's approval that they will continue to be the lead agency. So they've asked me for that approval, that's why I have it on the agenda.
Does that need to be in the form of a motion, Mr. Trish?
Yeah. Or it's cons- just a consensus. I mean, they're asking me to sign off on it. I'm okay with it. It's just they, they wanted the board's way in.
I'm good.
Got a motion, wish?
I, I'll make a motion, I will.
Second?
They just needed a consensus, so as long as everybody was good.
Are you all right with that?
Mr. Smith is.
The agenda says motion and second, I don't.
Yeah, that's what I was going by.
We voted, we have voted on it before.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, we got a motion, Mr. Shores, second, but Commissioner Elliott, cast your vote. Okay, the North Carolina, excuse, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Let me get a drink of water here, I might try to stick it to you. North Carolina Daniel Boone Heritage Trail Funding, Kay Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Ms. Bowlin, Ms. Mary Bowlin, are you here this, this morning?
Yeah, that's.
Um, Ms. Bowlin represents North Carolina Daniel Boone Heritage Trail. I think they operate in several counties, uh, to do a lot of promotion for that, for history and those types of things related to Daniel Boone. You know, we've got Boone's Cave Trail, and I think she's here this morning to talk about a program she would, uh, like to ask support from the county for, for.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that you? That's you, ain't it?
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Bowlin. I am a representative from the North Carolina Daniel Boone Heritage Trail. Uh, the purpose of our organization is to promote Daniel Boone in North Carolina through travel and tourism, through, uh, education and preservation. And we are here this morning to, uh, request that you consider funding us. Uh, along with, if you choose to do that, then you're joining us, uh, joining some of the other TDA's in the area, including Davie, Watauga, Yadkin, Surrey, Wilkes Counties, uh, who, uh, help us also. I've given you a brochure. This is one of the, this is where some of the, the money goes for, uh, that we get from funding, also from programming, uh, maintaining our website, and, um, doing, uh, programs and PR, uh, work. Uh, hopefully, we will be able to grow and expand to do more programming in areas such as Boone Cave Park. Uh, Boone Cave Park is one of the most important sites in, in the trail system because it is the number one anchor where Daniel Boone and his family, uh, settled, as, as I'm sure that you know that, the first place in North Carolina that he settled. Uh, one, uh, interesting note is that Daniel and Rebecca had ten children. Out of the ten children, eight of them were born here in North Carolina. So if you look at the big picture, uh, the descendants of Da- of Daniel Boone all over the country and in probably in the world, that are thousands of them have their roots right here in North Carolina. Uh, we appreciate, uh, your, uh, consideration, and I'm going to let Michelle DeLaat, uh, give you a little bit more information. Uh, oh, I brought you some pictures, didn't I? Uh, I don't know, who, who does that?
I will run it. You just need to tell me when to, when to.
I just real, um, this is our logo. Uh, of course, that's Boone Cave Park, this beautiful place. This is a group of, uh, a group of us at the Sugar Tree Creek site, uh, in Davie County. That's just what, the home place of the Boones. A good number of their children were born there. This is where they lived before. They went, uh, up further up the Yadkin River to, uh, where I live up in, uh, near Ferguson. This is, uh, at the Hickory Ridge Living History Museum in, uh, Boone. And what I, the reason I included that is this shows you some of the programming that we do. Uh, we, we work at different sites and different locations. Uh, when we do a program, we try to pull in the, uh, the old, uh, what I call the old, uh, frontiersmen, backwoodsman. Demonstrate firing of the muskets along rifle. Uh, more programming that we do, uh, cooking at the hearth at the Boone Cabin in Boone. And, uh, this is the, uh, Boone Cabin at, uh, Whipper Will in Ferguson. This is our meeting that we just had about a month ago at the Wilkes Heritage Museum. We, uh, had about thirty people participate in that, which was very successful. R.G. Absher is one of our musicians who helps us, and he's vice president of the trail. And then the last one is, uh, our logo again. I also wanted to let you know that Mr. Sim DeLaat is, uh, serving on our board, and he has been very instrumental and helpful to me because he knows a lot of the history of, uh, of Davidson County, so, um, and, um, has done a lot of research. We appreciate your time. I got, um, Michelle DeLaat's going to give you a little bit more information.
Thank you.
I want to tell you a couple of things about Mary that she won't talk about, about herself. Uh, but she is not only the head of this organization of the Daniel Boone Trail, but she is a researcher and a writer. And for over thirty years, she's written, uh, many periodicals or many articles for periodicals and, uh, for newspapers and magazines. She's a currently guest writer for the Yadkin Valley Magazine that's published out of, um, um, we, uh, East Bend, is that right?
Yes.
East Bend, North Carolina. Um, but a couple of years ago, she compiled, uh, and did a cookbook, which I'm passing around to you, but it's not just any old cookbook. It is a beautiful story of the residents of the Boone family here in North Carolina, starting with the banks of the Yadkin here in Davidson and going on up to Wilkes County. And, um, she, uh, weaves the stories of many of our, uh, major historic sites in North Carolina that she has visited and cooked. And by the way, she didn't say she cooks these meals, uh, that you see, these tables that you see beautifully set. Uh, she cooks all those meals and, uh, tells the story of North Carolina and American history, uh, early American history here in North Carolina. But, um, the university, Mercer University Press, who, uh, received her manuscript, called her after a couple of days and asked her the question that every author wants to hear, and that is, how soon can we publish your book? So not every author gets that, uh, that response from a publisher. She has done, uh, a lot of research with us on the Boone property in Sugar Tree Creek. She has, uh, in, actually contacted, um, Dr. Ellen Cowan of the Department of Geological and Environmental Sciences at Appalachian State University, who is coming down to do ground penetrating radar work at the Sugar Tree Free Site, Sugar Tree Creek site in just a couple of weeks. And we're very excited about that because this will give us more information, uh, about that particular site. In addition, she has been the only person who has tried to research and find the, uh, or contact the current landowners of the two sites in Wilkes County, where Daniel Boone and Rebecca lived, uh, in Wilkes County, to see if that property can be put in a land, some type of a land trust, just as the Sugar Tree Creek property has been. So all of these things are very important. Uh, as you know, over time, um, these great historic sites get lost in time, the stories get lost in time. And just as you have done with the, uh, Yadkin River Park and the Daniel Boone site here, Mary is doing the same up in Wilkes County and with her organization. So I feel confident that she, any support you give her now and in the future will be wisely used. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to speak.
Michelle, maybe you know this, and maybe you have to direct you. My understanding is one of the things, functions that you perform is, uh, getting this, the historical information to the hands of third and fourth graders. Can you expand on that a little bit, because I?
Uh, we, we are just trying to tie in the school system, I shouldn't say curriculum, but with the curriculum, uh, the curriculum in grade, I believe it's grade three, actually mentions Daniel Boone as, as one of the, uh, parts of the curriculum. North Carolina teach, uh, North Carolina history is teaching, is taught in grade four, and it used to be gr- uh, taught in grade eight. But, uh, to my knowledge, there is no, uh, publication or, uh, book, uh, on Daniel Boone in North Carolina that is appropriate for elementary schools, children. So that's one of the things that we want to do, to get it in the hands of, uh, children of that age that actually have something in their hand to read about. Uh, some folks up in Pennsylvania did that for Daniel Boone when he was a boy. What we would concentrate on as a teenager and a young man here, uh, Daniel Boone spent, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two years of his life here. He always called Carolina home, and he was, uh, we want to get this in the hands, uh, more information in the hands of teachers so that they can, uh, have lesson plans and talk about Daniel Boone. And also, uh, we can present programs at schools upon their request.
Is there plans, uh, when I'm looking at this pamphlet here, uh, I see it was created in early spring, and, uh, it's got, uh, different events at different parts of the trail. Would, would this also include Daniel, our, uh, Boone's Cave Park that we have here in later?
Yeah, they had pictures of that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good if we could, in our parks and recreations on our website, include something about this on our website. That way people could go to it and access it, um, find out a little bit more about it.
I agree. I agree. I think it'd have been great if you brought one of these apple pies with you.
That was another question, if, on the, on the website, you can put on there how they can get that book if you, if they, if they so want it. And, uh, it, it would be good, uh, to, to, uh, let the press know how they could get, uh, this particular book, how much it costs and that kind of thing. Maybe you can get Hannity to put it on his show.
Casey, you got anything as far as?
No, sir, um, other than the funds, you know, we typically don't, um, do funding nonprofits, except we have done similar things as this with our trash, uh, Keep America Clean or Beautiful program operated out of TRIP. It's up to the board. I mean, we can either, if it's the will of the board to provide the five hundred dollars, we can do that now, straight up, to the agency, or we could do it through TRIP, as we did the, um, Keep America Beautiful campaign.
Put it on the agenda for decision? Is that annually or one time or what?
I, I think it, I think, um, Ms. Bowlin's request has been for just for this year, but I, we may end up seeing recurring requests. Is that correct? Is this, is this funding just for one year?
It is for one year, but we would, uh, we'll actually perhaps entertain the, uh, consider making it a yearly, but we will be happy whatever, whatever your, uh, consideration is.
And I don't know what your thoughts are, Casey, but I don't know if Thomas has got five hundred dollars in his account or not, but with our Boones Cave and our park, I mean, it looks like that would be a, a tool for, um, you know, advertisement or, or whatever to help our park. So it's only, it's a small amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, it, the reason why it's on the agenda today is symbolic, you know, wanting the board to recognize, you know, essentially it is an advertisement for a county park.
I mean, it's got to bring traffic to our park, so, I mean, I, I don't.
He's got a title.
He's got a title.
Which means he's, he's going to ask us for money anyway. He's got, you have the next item anyhow, so just stay up.
Don't ask us for the five hundred dollars, huh?
To, to your point, exactly. Every year I do put some money in for advertisement, but up to, so far, for the five years that I've been here, we've not been able to get the advertising budget. So hopefully, if that would got approved in the budget, uh, then, uh, we, we could do it through that.
You're asking for, we've got funds and parks and rec, we can cover the five hundred dollars, yes. And so if that's, again, I'm not asking for, I don't think the item has an appropriation on it, maybe it does. We could do it out of P and R.
Well, you know, Davidson County could buy a membership, since we're part of this.
Could and.
Heritage Trail.
That's kind of what I was thinking through Thomas, since it affects his parks and.
We got a, you know, they level five membership.
I would rather see us, uh, buy the membership than just donate the money. Because you've got other people in this county that'd be up here with a handout for the money.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that's what we was doing by, by the trail, raising, raising a membership.
The request was just for one year, but we would consider it as a recurring thing as we get into budget next year. So, yes, I mean, that makes more sense.
We put this in the same category as the chamber, if we contribute every year to the chamber.
Well, if, if it's coming, if he's got an advertising budget, which, I mean, I'm not looking at it if he does, that's, that'd be a good place to have a membership. It's like a dues and subscriptions out of parks and rec budget, much like dues and subscription in a variety of county parks.
Yeah. Put this on the agenda for, on the consent agenda for Tuesday?
Sure.
So Thomas is getting five hundred and fifty dollars for advertisement in this budget this year, right?
Probably, that's, sounds like five twenty-five.
Monday, I'm still coming on Tuesday.
Right, five oh one.
Five oh one, you get five oh one, Thomas.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, it's on Monday. I said Tuesday. I still show up on Tuesday. I've been there a lot. Monday.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Sim and Michelle.
Where can I purchase a cookbook? I would like to have one of those.
I figured you would.
Cookbook series. Okay, thank you.
You gonna put something in that?
I like one of those as well, son.
Send it to all.
I'll, I'll share it with one of you.
I just want the food, if you can cook that, you know.
We got that. We'll hook that up. Okay, proposal for development of the Greenway, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thomas, you might as well start walking this way. Um, I'm gonna let Thomas go through the details of this, but you've got before you a proposal. Senator Jarvis contacted me. I've got two issues kind of rolled into one. Let me start with the, the one I know about a little more, and I'll get Thomas to tell you about the Greenways. So the old house that we moved, um, across Belmont Road from the corporate center. If you remember that old home years ago, we had to work through the state to move across the road. Well, it's got some, you know, is it Preservation North Carolina kind of is the owner of that, Chuck? Is that right, saying, or the arbiter of that, the, the referee, if you will? Um, structurally, some parts of that house has, uh, got some serious issues that needs to be contended with. So they've approached Senator Jarvis about receiving funds that we could be a pass through to, to them. I mean, doing that, Senator Jar-
I mean, doing that, Senator Jarvis requested, uh, well, we're not just gonna go to appropriations committee and ask for just the five hundred thousand to fix the house. Could we throw in something else? Um, Mr. Greenway's here. He's got you five miles of trails that's on a master plan that he'd also like to throw into the request. So that's why he's here before you, wearing his tie appropriately, so.
And to Casey's point, when, uh, when North Carolina Preservation got ahold of me and asked me, did I have a shovel-ready project that could be ready in two days, this was the first thing that we'd been working on. We've actually been, me and Chris has been working on this for three, four years? And, uh, trying to go with the DOT and work on this stuff. As you know, we submitted an NC DOT grant five years ago, and Spencer got it to hook to the Wilcox Bridge, going to their park and the train museum. So we've been trying to get ready to go for that DOT, uh, grant again, so that's the reason we had this kinda ready to go, especially since Egger said they wanted to see a greenway come through that property as well for the employees. So that's what this basically is, is this a greenway getting to, uh, the, from the Yadkin River Park to Egger and pass Egger to the Belmont House.
All we have to do.
So that way kinda all tied together.
All we have to do is accept the money?
Yes, sir.
That's the easiest decision.
Is that a motion?
What we're doing now.
Any strings?
Not at this, no, sir, not at this time.
What we're asking the board for approval is to submit the proposal for the two point five. Five for the house.
I'm good with it.
Yep.
Two point five, five house, two house for the trails.
Yep.
I'm good.
Me too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure. Now you can take your time. Who moved that house across the street? Who, who owns the house now?
Preservation, North Carolina.
I'll tell you what, we, we walked through that thing, what, before they ever got it moved.
That's why the request is coming. I'm not sure a lot of upkeep has been done at this point.
I say, will they, uh, manage the upkeep after that?
Yeah, that's the goal, is they take the five hundred and fix the home, and then from there, I'm not sure what they're gonna do with it, but, um.
Yeah, they have, that, that house has been built onto and built onto, and when we walked through it, it was in terrible shape. We wasn't even really sure if it was gonna survive the move across the street.
Right, it, it almost fell apart trying to get it across. If I can, Madam Clerk, this one here is time-sensitive. Senator Jarvis, with appropriations committees are meeting as we speak, um, and if you don't get your stuff in, you liable to get shut out. Is, by common consent, is this okay to send the proposal to Mr. Jarvis? I'm gonna send it today.
That's good.
Okay. Most of what, Jar- I make a motion to, to bind on it, I'll keep it.